Good evening, this is a meeting of the Hand and Bore Selectmen and Bore to Health being held in the townhouse on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the play.
By the name of citizens of the United States of America, into the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with a reason.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves, Kristen? Good evening from all over here in the Indian Heights. Thank you. Uh, no minutes this evening?
No.
Okay. First order of business is an appointment to the Conservation Commission. Scott Thomas, one of them, yeah, you get, you get sent to, get to the big table.
I have Tom Page here from.
Tom Page from the Conservation Commission. So I've seen you at some Conservation Commission meetings.
I have been to a few, yes.
And I, and I understand Bonnie is giving you cases of paperwork.
Yes, yes, it's all good.
So, your interest?
I am, I am, I wanna help the town, so.
Your past experiences?
None.
No, I mean, you never worked for a living or anything?
I never, I just embryo, no. I was a, I'm a computer network engineer, I worked for Wally Computer, um, I designed computer networks and, and network, some little kind of stuff. Um, I just moved into town about a year ago, and, um, I work from home, so I have some free time, free time unofficially, and, um, I love this town. I really do, and I wanna help the town.
Me too. Okay, Conservation Commission is such a key, key committee, very important to.
Uh, what area of town do you live in? Are you near any wetlands, is there?
Um, I live on Echo Valley Drive, I know there is a, a stream on the side, but it's way out of the way.
Yeah, it's back in the property, backs up to the, that Hand and Woods two project from way back, yeah, so, hey, nice neighborhood.
You like it?
Thank you for volunteering, really, don't mind the other guys. Just chart your own path, that would be fine.
Um, Scott's also on the Fiber Optic Committee, he's a valued member of the, the team there, and he's, um, put in a lot of hard work and brings a lot of good ideas to the table, so I, no problem, um, you know, with his interest in joining the Conservation Committee, I think he'd be a valuable asset to the town.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Thomas to the Conservation Commission.
Sir. Any further discussion?
Last chance.
Oh, I'm in. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you for volunteering.
And for the term, if we could get maybe recommendations from the, who's chairman of your committee now?
Wenda.
How's the new person? When she didn't show up and you made her chair?
You gotta get swarmed, you gotta get a.
So we need to pick dates.
One letter and gets sworn in.
We need to work on dates perhaps with the committee, with all the resignations, who's got the two-year, who's got the three-year, when you, you're till such and such days. Lifetime? Alright, great.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Thank you. So swearing in is.
Town clerk.
He might even be down there now.
He hides in there.
I caught it once for a few years.
We'll see if she's here or if she can, she can do it now.
And Larn will get the paperwork.
Thank you.
Is he fire chief out there?
Yes, he is.
Someone.
Gentlemen? You have a new probationary, now firefighter?
Just get four seats up there.
Yeah, we can get four seats up.
You have a cadet?
There's one over here.
Get everybody in there.
He's squatching. I hope he better work where he's got a fire.
What do you got?
So this evening, um, thank you for accommodating us, we have a probationary firefighter application, and then secondly, a cadet, um, program, first, our first, first cadet application. Um, first, the probationary firefighter, Ryan LaFontaine, who lives in town, um, right off Allen Street, he's interested in becoming, um, a full-time firefighter, and he's pursuing, you know, a qualified firefighter, through him then to get eligible for the academy, and with him staying good standing in the fire department and coming to our calls and training, if we choose to sponsor him, I'd be able to go to the academy.
Okay.
Questions?
Ryan, what's your, uh, your interest in joining, I know you said you wanted to be a full-time firefighter, but what, what brings you?
I mainly wanted to do it sometimes younger. I guess, like helping people, and always, always to give my helping hand, and I wanna learn the trade and everything, so I'm kinda just getting into college to put my foot through the door, to just get it going.
What do you do when you're not, I mean, this is not a full-time thing, so, what do you do?
I work at Serpro right now, it's a bio remediation company, and, uh, just go in after, uh, like sewage spills and, uh, chemical spills and clean up.
Right, are you mostly out of town with that work? It's, uh, it did say Serpro Hampshire County, so are you?
It's like that, that's your town, Plummer Line.
Okay. Is your home, and to be available for calls and stuff like that at night?
Nights and weekends.
Never happens.
Any further questions?
No.
Both of you?
I did the last one.
I move to appoint, uh, Ryan LaFontaine to the role of probationary firefighter, subject to Chief Moore and all three of the committees.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And we should welcome board.
Thank you, Ryan.
Now for the cadets.
What's the deal there?
Uh, this is Josh Roshien, and he's from Wolverham, he's our first cadet program, Lieutenant Bertrand is the, um, leader in that program, so I'm gonna let him handle this one. So, sort of like we do as our call member, we interviewed Josh last week, um, comes from a long line of first responders' families, law enforcement and such, has an interest in getting his foot in the door in the first responders program as well, that we're offering through a cadet program. He's currently at Minichog, um, still, he has a couple of years left there, um, so our first one to get through the program, so looking forward to getting him started, and works at, uh, right, uh, races, races outside, so.
What are you gonna, in the job, sophomore, so?
And what's gonna be the, um, process for getting him into the cadet, what, what are you doing, what kind of training are you doing?
Um, similar to probationary, obviously not in the life safety standpoint, obviously more, um, under the safety officer scope, so he can help out with some stuff, but can't climb, like, up to a roof where there's a height restriction and that stuff. Um, I know, I look at some of the OSHA stuff, yeah, I'm knowing our equipment, how to put the gear on, and then once they turn eighteen, then they can start doing that regular training, which will help them get into the call academy.
Let me actually tell you, what's the status of your equipment, P-FAS, uniforms?
Um, we purchase new every year through budget, and we don't have, seem, we don't have a problem with the P-FAS, right?
They don't have it? We fail, there's just legislation passed that.
Yeah, um, our, our salesman, I could, you know, double check, I don't see any labels on it, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, it's like, they don't asbestos in this, you know, if I'm sucking on the shelf, you have to, I'd have to ask and see, to make sure. But if I've asked before, then I'm gonna ask again every night.
Josh, you gonna tell all your friends and try and get more cadets in the program?
It's a goal.
Okay.
Right.
Does that need a motion, actually, he's, this is on the tutelage of Nick here at this point, really?
Well, that, that's, yeah, that's what I was asking Brian about, so we thought we'd come down here and, and see.
Progress, you've got somebody, this is great.
So, so, uh, was discussing with Nick earlier that, you know, he does have to have good grades through school, so after first semester, we'll, we'll check with the school, um, to make sure he's telling his, his end there. If, if, maybe eat it too, I don't know. It's always that option.
And another question, what's the status of the, the, all this dry weather, what's, where are we on the fire scale?
It's, things are definitely starting to dry out, I can see the ponds, um, the water levels of the, the ponds going down, it's, it's definitely getting dry, we, we need rain, yeah.
Are we at red flags there or not?
Not, not yet, we still have good canopy and getting, you know, plenty to do at, at night, on the cool nights. Um, once the leaves fall and they're dry, and if it's still dry, then, then we get the windy conditions and the dry humidity, then, then we'll, I expect to see some red flags, but that's a long ways.
I could have one.
Yeah, um, with the ponds, and clearly, as you know, we don't have hydrants in the town, I did have our day crew last week, at the end of last week, check all the water sources in town, and as of right now, we're seem okay. There's a couple we're gonna check this week, just to make sure we can still get the water, but it's not to the point where it was like three years ago, where the, when we had that drought, where the actual, um, strainers were out of the water, so, as the chief said, if, I'm gonna get, probably concerned if we don't get any rain.
Right, Josh, that's it. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for volunteering.
So, so I have one question. In the future, do you still want us to bring the cadets, if you have any additional, um, do you still wanna meet them?
Maybe check with Brian and see how we can fit him in. You would like to meet.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair, since we have guests here, do you wanna just, uh, jump ahead and?
Doesn't matter, I find the process is, doesn't need.
Come back again, it'll, it'll wear on your shirt.
I watched, I watched Lesky.
You can re-watch it, we recorded, so.
Paper view soon, really.
Fine. Thornton Burgess, are you, where are we?
So, we have a, uh, meeting with, the first meeting with the Time Bond, uh, staff person, Mohammed, I forget his last name, John, you're on all the emails, um, and he's gonna start, this is the, this is the first meeting where we're gonna discuss the scope of the spatial planning analysis that we're about to undertake at the building, you know, they've done the physical conditions assessment of the building, and they're wrapping that up, um, so we'll have this initial meeting to kinda scope out how that space can be used and who we wanna bring in to that, you know, for further discussions, and I think, quite honestly, the library will be a, a big part of that.
Now, we, we paid for that other study a few years back where, you remember the twenty-seven bathrooms and all that? For this building here, but that had a spatial analysis of the needs of the different departments, it seemed like it would be good to incorporate that data when whoever went through the building said, oh my gosh, planning is gonna need five hundred square feet and stuff like that.
Yeah, that was also for the remodel, so they were counting in spatial needs based on a remodel.
Right, but they also saw function needs, so maybe just use some of that.
Right, I, I just wanna make sure we don't send them down that path, that they were looking to fully renovate TWP.
Cause I mean, we saw, heck, the only way they made it work was by getting rid of the library in this building, so they knew there was a spatial problem.
I don't, I don't, I agree with that, I, I think there's enough rooms down there that can be divided up into offices without tearing down walls and putting staircases and.
I think with the different sized rooms, it's more a question, what department would benefit from bigger than a smaller, right?
Classrooms are pretty big, I mean, they had thirty desks when they were kids, so.
You got those nice rooms on the east wall that have the partitions, and I see those for needs like when you have public meetings for planning and stuff, they can open the partition and then have a group time, yeah.
I thought Brian had a pretty good layout too, that he gets.
Good start.
The, the, um, I'd be interested to see the Grammy and Southampton, what they do with their, their schools over there.
Play it so high, right?
Well, I think in Grammy, I think the Grammy one was, they did a, they put in a whole new, uh, uh, air conditioning system for the whole building and asbestos removal.
I remember about remediation that drive it right up, yeah.
So they, I mean, they did a pretty extensive renovation, I think it was five point three million dollars, I don't know about Southampton.
Yeah, that sounds like remediation money.
So, can I ask a question? So where does the library fit into all of this, and where, do you have any thoughts about where it would be located within Thornton Burgess?
I would assume in the current library, I mean, you have, if you, if you look at the, and having gone there like you did as well.
Yes, we're not talking about that.
They still had books back then, stop, didn't have any computers, but you have that big library, you also have accessory, there's the one room towards the soccer field, that's right connected to the library, you have another room over connected as well with a door, you have at least three accessory rooms outside but connected by doors to the library space, and I think if you total, total all that square footage, you'd find it's bigger than what you currently have upstairs. And with better separation, you know, we have, you've done a great job with different areas inside the main library part, the teen center, et cetera, but now you could have them in their own physical space, maybe not being, I won't say influenced, but bothered by an adjacent thing going here, you could have more sectionalized programs going on, we're fortunate that we have the beautiful Roch River, we are very fortunate.
You did mention something about having, um, a tour through, do you have any, like, ideas of when that would be, or would you do it during the day or?
I would think after the spatial understanding we've had, Don.
Yeah.
I think at the time.
I think we were thinking sometime, so this is the, the very first meeting that we'll have with Time Bond, is really just a kickoff meeting to, to really scope out what they're actually gonna do, and that's gonna happen on this Thursday, and then, at that point, um, that'll, that'll help us figure out who we wanna bring in for additional conversations, the library is an easy one, that, we need to have conversations about, cause it's, it's, it's really the biggest department in here, right? So I'll definitely reach out to find out when we can have those conversations, and we'll, we'll gather that information, do you want me to show that layout, Craig?
Yeah, I, I think it presents a, a rough idea.
I would love to see.
I mean, this was just a very preliminary.
Rumors, I've heard a rumor that we weren't moving.
Brian's gonna try to put on the screen, I think that behind you, do you want? Yeah. Spin around.
That one. That's very, very preliminary.
But it, it accounts for a lot of the buildings and spatial needs, and, you know, you can see that, you know, based on what you're looking at, Brian, to the gate to the library, it's like it's homing almost.
And Kathy, you see is like, the room in the upper, upper left?
Okay.
You know, a separate room, a room to the right of the library space as well, another room up there above it as well, you know, so you have, plus the office space right next to it, that of course was always there. I mean, you have, if you take that whole block, not the, not the yellow down the side there, I think you have all these individual spaces here that give you more square footage than you have now. And, and easy access to bathrooms too, no, we'll find that out, I'm just saying, and the potential for growth, I mean, that's the key part here, is that, I think it's bad to think that we're gonna just go ahead and cookie cutter what we have here over there.
That's what I keep getting in my head, it's what it's like inside, I know what it's like inside there.
The big thing we're forgetting to do is, it's gonna be ADA compliant more so than.
Yes, the stairs here bother me.
The bathrooms haven't done, there's only one person that's, I'm told, has already put in, uh, a claim to a room. I'm told Mo Gray wants his classroom back for his office.
The science room.
Is there a separate entrance or the library, like Saturdays were open?
Well, you have, well, there is, and I recall the door, I mean, the door to the, all the way to the right.
On the orange, bottom right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that could be exterior. And the rest of the building could be secure or?
Well, it's fearless here.
It could, yeah.
Those, well, we did that before, and you may recall back with all the conversation about basketball time when Dave was coaching, et cetera, how we were able to keep the building isolated from the gym area, et cetera. But they have, no, they've upgraded those doors inside, so they can be individually controlled, right?
So would the gym still remain as a gym for, like, kids from town sports and stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, all the money we put into that, oh my gosh, yeah.
And our yoga showroom, and there'd be a large area like we have for the auditorium for some of our bigger programs.
Well, I think the talk was that, the other term was more the community area, right, for programs like that.
Right, so where would that?
This is the cafeteria and stage.
Right, there, large meeting room?
Oh, okay.
That's where we hold the town.
Town meeting, oh, okay.
Just right down the hallway in Boomer, right there, yeah. Brian, is there a need, do you see a need in the current program for the kitchen as a kitchen, or is that a possibility, that's a pretty good chunk of space that could be renovated, besides it does have the pair of bathrooms there as well?
Yeah, I, it is, one of the conversations that, that Dan had from Parks and Rec was if, if the kitchen facilities were to remain, or, or part of the kitchen facilities would remain to have cooking classes and things like that as part of their offering, or the, probably the, the commercial, the larger commercial kitchen, I don't know that we would need that, unless this is gonna, unless this is gonna serve as a shelter facility.
Yeah, the only thing I would think about is that, with the current standards, some of that stuff was there when we were there, and you might be getting into, especially if it's, I don't know if it's gas run or whatever, there's a lot of requirements for upgrades and safety.
I think, I think they've changed that, because I think the, the students that are in there now do cooking and stuff.
Really?
Yeah. There's like a cooking classroom.
The other thing I wanna be careful of too is if, this is listed on our SIM plan as an emergency shelter, you know, this is the largest building we have in town, if there is ever a need to shelter, we'd wanna have that kitchen there. It's part of emergency preparedness.
Yeah, where is it on the list though? I know we have them in different orders.
It doesn't matter, it's just there as a facility, there's, there's no primary alternate contingency plan for shelters, there's, we have these buildings to use as we need to see them.
Okay, it's not the first, second, like, if we, okay, we're gonna use Greenbells first, and then overflow at Thornton Burgess or?
No, I, I think the thought always is, you know, well, whatever we do with the senior center, and, you know, it's anything's larger scale, then we obviously wanna use TDPs and space sizes.
I know there was talk of, there's also, Minichog is on the list as well, as a multi-town shelter.
Right, that's not Hand and specific.
Yeah.
What are your plans gonna be for this building?
Not discussed at this point.
We haven't gotten to that piece of the body yet.
I mean, I have a vision.
Well, you gotta take one step at a time.
I have, I have a vision. Well, I know, yes, I, I think a lot of towns have turned town halls like this into educational and cultural centers, or, or spaces, and so they have their artisans, have little booths, they can do their things here, you can have educate different classes in here, and some have turned them into entrepreneurial shared workspace, you know, so you have, you know, two or three businesses and they share one, you know, administrative assistant.
They did that with the mills in East Long, in East Hampton, yeah, there's bloodbowl, you know, coworking space or.
That's, you know, five years.
Businesses come in and rent.
Well, you gotta check this up on time and.
Well, it also thinks, anything the town does under the town umbrella, however, if this building wasn't good enough to be the town hall, doesn't need to be improved before we put our stamp on it for something else, and if it doesn't have ADA, it's gonna need something, so, any plan we do has to say, what's the cost for bringing it forward? Do we sell to somebody for apartments, and it's their number, it's their money to pay.
Right, right, I do have a question though, um, with regard to the other towns that you have experienced with, um, moving the town hall, libraries were included in, in those moves?
Yes.
Cause I'd be very interested in understanding, at even reaching out to them and getting a better understanding.
In Grammy, the library moved over there.
In Southampton, it was not.
And I liked Brian's timeline, when he didn't try and do it all at once, he said, town hall first, and then the libraries separate.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
No, but I mean, he understands the focus, you know, we cannot be confused at the same time, which is good.
But there are professional moving companies for libraries, which I know will be quite an expense, but, um, it's what we would need, um, to have professionals move us.
But I think the big thing, like we've talked about, the accessibility for every town office would be so much better, like you said, the up and, you know, you know.
We're not saying we don't want to move, we're just saying, we just didn't have any information.
We're not picking up three books at a time and bringing them all, planning it out.
No information about even plan.
About a year process.
Right.
Brian's timeline that we came up with last week, laying out all, you know, strategically, and all the logistics, was about a year process.
I think the board's plan is that all the stakeholders are gonna be involved in this, right, so, we're not handing you a map and like, here's your new office, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be inexpensive to do, but I think in the long run, it will be a real benefit.
Well, it's a great building.
Yes, and the grounds are great.
Yeah, and it's been kept, I think, pretty much in good shape.
Kathy, I've heard about a fundraiser, and the fundraiser's gonna be that the former students can bid on their old lockers and take them with them.
Kids don't even use the lockers anymore.
Okay, answer my question. Keep this in the loop. Yeah, yes, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I, I would expect an email either the end of this week or early next week, after we meet with Time Bond on Thursday.
Okay, awesome, great, thank you.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of like, a, a tour, probably sometime in October, middle, maybe the end of October.
At night or during the day, I work.
We could do a remote selections meeting over there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you can do that too.
Probably have to be in the evening, cause the students are still be there.
Right, maybe it's gonna be, yeah, later, evening, later afternoon.
Right, this Thursday, the school committee has their meeting, so.
Oh, interesting.
Go whine around the hog. It's wandering.
It's not exactly the Pentagon, we'll find it.
Awesome, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for all you do.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, special term meeting, we're all in.
See you Wednesday?
Yeah, I'll see you Wednesday.
So I moved the items around.
Thank you. One question, shoot the two CPA things be next to each other, just.
Which ones are those?
Well, you got the North Road thing plus the, uh, actual CPA request with the scoreboards. The North Road is, is the second half of what we did, last year.
Right, so, the, the first article needs a two-thirds, who's gonna make the motions on this?
I don't think we wrote that thing yet.
It shouldn't be us.
No.
Actually, just like we did at the town meeting, where they, they picked over Keith, or was it?
Are, are they willing to do that now?
I'll ask them.
And I know was the last time that they, that was it, that was their.
Yeah, they were going along then.
Yeah, they were going under a group.
No. Right, so, change town clerk from elected to appointed, are we gonna have an explanation what that means?
Yeah, I think these, these should have explanations.
Because, I mean, it's gonna go to a ballot, so essentially, if you vote, if you vote for this, at this point, it's really only putting it on the ballot for the, for the town to vote.
Yeah.
It's a true step process.
And then if the town votes to do that, and the people are re-elected, cause I think they're up at that time, what happens then?
Um, they'll serve until the, until the board makes an appointment, till the, the board's gonna make an appointment, statute's very specific at that, if, if it's on, if the, if the election, the person filling the position is elected on the same ballot as the question and it passes, they will fulfill till the, till the board appoints, so it could be as short as a week, could be as long as the term, three years, five years, whatever the term is, three years in this case, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same thing with Article three, right?
Yeah.
And then we have board of selectmen, three to five, that doesn't go to the ballot.
Correct.
And then we have the revolving account for the EV's charging station.
Although, can I, can I just go back to that one for one second?
Yeah.
So we change it from three to five, but nobody fills those positions until?
The next election?
Next election, I guess.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then we, so we have to set staggered range.
And then it'd have to be one year, and one for one year, one for two years, one for three years.
So it's like Rock and Rock where they have a three, three, sorry, a two, two, one, two, two, one, cause it's three-year term.
So we gotta figure that out.
Yeah. Ready to figure, yeah.
Right, but revolving fund for electric vehicles. That's pretty standard.
Yeah, but like it's back into, I saw they put the bushes up, so it's moving right along. Really need to figure out a rate.
I know, I keep, I'll follow up with that guy again.
Jerry again, yeah, that thing could be live in under a month or so. It's just waiting for the grid to?
National Grid to hook it up. I think, I think they're waiting to hear from National Grid when, when they're gonna turn it on. But to, I think to your point, and I agree that we can, we can establish this stuff now. We don't have to wait for National Grid to hook up for us to have these discussions, so.
For the pricing. Yeah, we already established the revolving fund on our own, so that's one.
Right.
We actually don't need to codify the revolving fund until the annual town meeting. Cause we're allowed to put one in place until the annual. But I think getting the, I talked to some people and I think it is gonna be pretty popular. People want that level three, like you said, four. Right, it's very enticing, you know.
Until they start putting more in.
My son's right down the street and they said, no, we'll go for a ride, we'll take that fifteen minutes and hook up.
Make sure we put that credit card on a higher rate.
Yours? My son's.
Article six, that's the spending limit.
Spending limit, yeah.
I like the, I like the titles there, categories you got there, yeah.
Categories are nice, aren't they? Streamlines it.
Do we have a number there? You have additional funding for insurance account, all your benefits? We don't know because we're gonna have to vote on the insurance first, right?
Life insurance.
The life insurance.
Yep.
All right, police department grants seventy-five hundred bucks. Cemetery, I don't understand that one yet. What's the maintenance thing they need to do? They get twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I'll follow back up with the cemetery commissioners. I had asked for folks to get back to me with the limits and I haven't heard back from them, so.
I'd like them to come in. You know, now, I've always said we're allowed departments to put on the warrant, but I'd like some background before.
And it, and it may be such a small amount that we just say.
Yeah, but you go back to like Frank said, you've got potential care, you've got the bump start, I mean, it's such that they can't take care of from some of those.
Right, or is this something deeper, like trying to do restoration?
Fair enough, then that's a project and that's okay.
Right.
But.
That should be CPC one.
And also, I've also said about timeline. If this is stuff that I'm doing to next summer, then this goes on annual one. When are you doing this work? Is it an emergency?
Could you invite them for the twenty-third?
Yep.
All right, senior citizen experience, senior citizen experience.
Uh, we do have another meeting tomorrow at eleven. That'll be zoomed if anybody wants to zip in. Or come and enjoy the, uh, the food.
We'll find out Wednesday what's going on with. No, we're in the spectrum.
Water district expansion phase two.
They're kinda waiting on grant information at this point.
Yep.
What do you think? When are they gonna announce those?
Uh, one stop was supposed to be September. And then the other one was that million dollar, uh, emergent contaminants grant that we're submitting the, the second part of the application now, so. Uh, last one, uh, Time Bond had told us, I think the turnaround was about a month. From when they, the last town that they worked with that submitted it and found out, so.
The one stop is how much?
First one, they have to, to the end of the month.
And the one stop?
Two point, four, two point five.
Oh, two?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Uh, that's what, that's what the request was, our request was, I think.
The one stop is two point five?
Yeah.
That would be very nice.
I think it was two point five, so that's all right?
Uh, fire state, you have, he doesn't have a thing yet.
Have a number?
Fire state.
I think around ten, I heard around ten, but nothing final.
Generator installation.
We were doing in-kind work, we brought down to a thirty or something, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, and he's gonna be getting some votes from electricians.
Electronic voting system, how did that go?
Uh, that, um, it's reserved and it's rented that we have a call Thursday at noon, right?
Yep.
Noon. Time Bond's at ten and this calls at, at noon. With Meridia, to talk about, uh, everything about it, pretty much.
How are we gonna educate the people about the vote? We have a new system and?
I've noticed the other meetings I watch, the moderator will typically have a couple of, I won't say fake questions, but yes or no, do you like pizza, A, or chicken wings, B, and like, just to show how the timing works and stuff.
We can't do that here because they think they're gonna get it.
Will the Red Sox win the series, yes or no?
That's a good one.
I, I do, I agree. I think there needs to be a demo, maybe three-question demo even before it starts. We can get information out, there's flyers, there's these little video, tutorial videos. We put it on a PEG channel, we can, everybody can watch the Infomercial at two o'clock in the morning.
When are we getting?
I think the demo's the important part because that's when we're gonna get the most people.
When are we getting them?
Um, we ask for delivery by mid-October. So I can, I'll follow up with a guy on Thursday.
And their selecting thing, still think we should add in here without a vote.
Make a motion with it?
Right, exactly.
All in favor?
Right, there you go.
Who voted now?
Right, I know, let's figure it out.
Yeah, still a place at this point. Uh, I'll check back with Aaron and see what's happening with that. Maybe we'll, Don, make a note that we ask him on Thursday, are we going Thursday night? Imagine for Michelle, she seems surprised.
I.
I might go just to listen to.
I suspect they probably won't be ready for any, so, so, so I believe that we've sent our ideas to them in, in the form of a lease amendment and it sounds like their attorney had sent them a draft agreement back. I don't think the school committee's looked at, uh,
They haven't posted an agenda for Thursday yet, so.
My sense is they won't be ready to take any action on Thursday.
Although that was your push though, at that last meeting.
Yeah, we're asking, since you're in a building, if we could have the keys right now, it'd be handy, right?
Larkin Burgess School Planning and Improvements, you know, we're gonna talk to Time Bond and see all that stuff, right?
Yep.
Twenty thousand bucks for the scoreboards?
At this point, that's, we have a CPC meeting tomorrow night. And at this point, that's the only request. There was some roofing talk from housing, but probably not for this one in your cycle.
What are the three criteria for CPC?
Uh, historical, open space, and affordable housing. And they have allowed limited recreation in the past ten years.
Traffic control fall under open space?
I don't see how.
I don't think so.
I'm, I'm thinking more about these lights out here.
Well, that's, that was gonna be my question tonight is, you know, with all the social media talking about, you know, the extra one out here, and we've been kicking around, we, I thought we were getting that other setup for, you know. We lost money on the casino, I don't say lost money. By using that consultant on the first one, it took away our ability to get the verb one, because I think the charge on that guy was twenty plus on designing how it went in, designing, whatever.
We didn't design the second one.
Didn't have to, because here it is, thank you. I think.
I'd like to move forward with it somehow. I just thought maybe we could do it under some type of?
Well, let me ask you this. You're more on a touch of what's happening with the grant thing and stuff like that. We have the pile. Do you think, do you feel safe and say, you know what? Let's take twenty-five thousand ARPA money and put that other one in here at North Road Main Street. Are we feeling decent about these grants coming in? I don't wanna keep touching the ARPA thing.
You have to talk to the water commissioner chair.
You don't wanna give it up yet?
I think you have a better idea at the end of the month.
Okay, but I'm just saying.
One stop, I think you have a better idea.
Out there. You start feeling good about that grant, you're feeling good, and we'll touch ARPA for the last one.
And we gotta spend, we gotta have it committed by the end of the year, ain't it?
Anyhow, right, right.
Okay, easement for National Grid. This is the, this is the E V thing, right?
Yep, connected chargers.
Bridge layout rockets, N D.
That's gonna come out. I haven't seen anything on that.
Now have a meeting with thirty-five more people? I know they canceled the one.
Getting out, come to the meeting and make a presentation.
It is a team stream like you've never seen, seriously. Everybody works to the statement, you know, that meeting.
Purchase of property, North Road.
So according to Doug and Jennifer, there is a purchase sale now for the property and they're getting ready to build the division, et cetera.
My only concern with it was that division price was off. Like I felt, why are we paying a majority of the money for a smaller chunk of parcel that they're gonna sell? The other chunk making money off the town.
Yeah, I don't know what the P N S number was. I don't know what the P N S number was. I just felt, and I think I shared at the meeting as well. I had no problem with the concept, I just felt the money was a little more than the value.
Right, I, I thought what they were selling it to us for was more than what they were paying for.
No, I don't think that was it, but I think they were making a lot, they should be doing a lot better. That number here to us, one tenth, I felt should have been down in the forty to fifty range.
Right, the one tenth is high.
Right.
But then they were gonna subdivide two acres of the town and sell the remainder or close to what they bought it for.
Right.
So that means we're, we're paying a lot of money for it, no reason.
Right, and that's why I was happy last time, is there a way we can keep this number out of it? That we're voting the concept forward. And then once you're all done, said and done, and the accounts are done with their stuff here, come back and see what you need to make your whole, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, what's it gonna? What's it gonna cost us to get a two-acre parking lot, basically? It shouldn't be a hundred.
Price per acre should be a little different.
Right.
So it is?
But it is, that's where we, it's the second half. The CPA money has already been?
Been appropriated.
But they didn't explain to it at that meeting that they were gonna sell part of the land off.
Yeah, they did.
I don't think so. I don't think they would leave it very clear.
This is CPA money?
Yes.
That's already been approved.
Already been approved, yeah. It's like the paperwork we did on, what was it, Walmart, town for two meetings.
Okay, content, and then this is the conservation restriction for that, the other part. Then the Maritron Battery, we do store systems, so it's all free.
And again, these are standalone, not like the batteries that are up at the snow or at the lake.
It's its own facility, it's not, it's not its own facility.
Then they got amended zoning map for the, the Great Horse. Changed it from R four, R six to Gulf Recreation. We'll see what happens at the planning board with that. So this is petition.
I haven't got, we haven't received any.
We'll get us some space there if we need it, right?
Yep.
And then the traditional financial transfers.
Added.
Free cash to reduce the tax rate. Stabilization to reduce the tax rate. And put a land transfer from free cash to general stabilization.
Oh, yeah, might be unless they drop a couple. I did talk to, I've received the assessments pretty early from them, they're nowhere near their numbers. And we did get the news that our, the chaplain's been managing the Anton account at D O R is retiring, and unfortunately, before the town meeting. It'd be nice to, like, took us all the way home, rather than bring, breaking in or working before. The, the person coming in to replace him is interim. Not gonna be the permanent person, so he kinda like, kind of really invested in learning what's going on here. And we've had a great relationship between Cliff and Jim Doran for many years.
That's it for that, well.
Oh, the other guy is also changing places, right? The Am Hall has been moved.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Yeah. Again, fair person with a lot of experience for their town, so it's always been good to work with.
Free cash updates. What do we got, Brian? We got free cash?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nine hundred twenty-one thousand. Two hundred eighty-three dollars, no pennies though.
I thought that was huge. When I look back at last year, it's only a few thousand over last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta talk to the treasurer and the captain and everybody, see what they wanna do with that.
What they can, what they can do.
We're gonna do September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
And the capital projects overview?
Start calling Burgess names. Fire station. Where, where are we with the fire station project? So we're appropriating money, we have money already for the?
Yep.
That part. Then there's a number for, if it goes to the next station, which could be up to three hundred or so.
For, for final design, yeah.
Right.
That's also incorporated into the project, the final project.
Right, fifty thousand, I guess, concept, concept level plans. So we have the fee letter back from the architect and Rose is drafting up a a contract for the fifty thousand.
Okay.
Now.
The other capital project, and I'm sorry to keep beating the bridge rum. Who's controlling the bridge project? The Laffinburg Bridge Project, is it still Howard Stein?
Are we paying them? Are we paying them?
Well, there was the other one, there was the in-kind, then we actually ran short of it.
Oh, that was that new grant, that's right here.
Well, we ran short of it, now we actually had to kick some money in. We had some in-kind, we had to put in thirty or twenty or thirty thousand, yeah.
I guess that my question is to?
Where are we going with this? Where are we going with this? They still go back to a point that after spending in between the three grants done, we're approaching a million dollars, and we don't wanna stay in the ground.
We're getting there.
It's the MVP, that's the MVP grant program for you.
Yet, right, Craig?
Oh, yeah.
We haven't found the pipe yet, right?
Yeah, where's the guy with the stack?
Thank you, with Dowzer. Is that in the money? We gotta pay extra for him, right? Yeah, but, but again, it goes back to, I'm sorry, the we have this. The reason we're putting a new bridge, a new bridge rather than fixing the bridge is because they're talking about flood mitigation. And I think we've heard before, if you wanna mitigate the problem in the Scantic, fix the Scantic, not the water going into it. And they don't know how to get to the next step from that. Sort of like going back to Senator Gobi or somebody saying, look, we need to redirect the funds we're talking about to a flooding problem and the silting problem in the Scantic, if you're worried about people getting flooded. I'm not worried about Laffinburg flooding once every sixty years as much as I am the backyard's flooding every year in the Scantic. Because the level's gotten so low, it's spreading. And I just get back into?
When was that big flood?
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
And the one before that was nineteen fifty-five.
How far up did it go?
So we had to close the road because it flooded over the bridge. And if you, the house?
Like Main Street here is flooded to, or just?
No, it flooded at the hardware store, but the reason there was because the covert had broken. They fixed the covert. Actually, they use that system where they just reline the inside. So that covert from the park, the river has been fixed. Uh, River Park was very bad. And that gets back into the silting thing, Don Dorn, George Stone. All those people had the backyards just, we had to take people out to homes with the Michigan loader because they couldn't get close enough to him. You know, put the bucket down, they climbed in and brought it back out. That's the problem with that type of, problem with the river, losing its basically capacity inside.
Not somebody talking about the silting.
Silting is exactly. That's where the flooding problem happens.
You gotta get the Army Corps of Engineers.
It's a permitting, I mean, Art was able to do it forty years ago. I don't know. But to me, that would have been the direction of that type of grant, looking at the overall thing. This focus on, and the rain garden, rain garden infiltration things is nice. It's okay. But the focus on replacing that bridge, and they still go back where the state has been beating us with money or fixed two other bridges and they don't do it for this one, which is on the travel lane, on a main road. And they don't think it needs to be fixed or replaced. They're happy with us just, hey, fix the two outside girders. I just wanna keep it on our radar so we don't get trapped into, hey, look, next spring, we gotta put in four million dollars for the bridge, cause oops, we signed something.
Then I would be concerned with the last grant.
Right, yeah.
All right, we need to be aboard of health, we got some food permits?
We do, as you know, the Fall Fest is coming up in, uh, October fifth. And it's gonna be very similar to last year where you're gonna see these food permits showing up. We can be meeting on a daily basis because some people don't get their stuff together in a timely manner.
Last year.
It was pretty, yeah.
These before.
Yeah, so I think, uh, Don, you enjoyed some of the names last time, so we have Yomos Bake. Yomos Bake. Yomos Bake. Y-O-M-O-S.
Almost baked?
Yomo, Yomo. Uh, bake stuff? Yes, bake stuff. But they've been certified, okay? And we have a permit also for the same day for East Village Tavern. I don't, seventy-three North Main Street. I know, is that where the old B and B market was?
Yes.
Okay, wasn't it Craft Thirty-two or something?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
John Sullivan.
They, they.
John Sullivan.
Is it? Okay, all right. So they're both asking for a one-day food permit for the Fall Festival. They do, they're kind of a, pump food, you know?
Fries, pump food.
You know where, you know where B and Bs are, yeah.
Next to the carpet place.
Yeah. So one-day food permit for both on the Fall Festival day of October fifth.
Yomos and East Village Tavern for October fifth.
All in favor? I thank you. We have no one-day permits for food and energy today. Slow down.
They actually just canceled one of their events, they signed up a license for it.
Should we, do they keep it in their pocket all the time?
They had an event coming up on, I believe it's the twenty-eighth, but they canceled for some reason, so she just let me know they won't be using it.
Was that like one of those insurance ones or something, I wonder?
I see it was a dinner dance, something like that.
Oh, really? I did go to the.
Yeah, dinner dance.
The halfway to St. Patrick's, yesterday, picked up the corned beef and cabbage meal yesterday. That was pretty good turnout. I dropped it off my sons. One quick point, so. I actually was babysitting Friday, Don, and brought my granddaughter from Weir Road down to Snappy's. We need a sidewalk, I just wanna put that out there.
You've only been saying that for three years.
Okay, what else we got? We got Selectmen's Report.
So the, we do have, C W A Board meeting tomorrow morning at nine, plus the Building Committee at eleven. We have the CPC Committee at six tomorrow night, which should not be carried along, we had Park and Ruck requesting money to replace the two scoreboards at the park, and it will tell you that they have been there twenty-five years, both the boards. That's the softball field and the upper field. And the price they're looking for, I went back to my records, it hasn't gone up by five percent over twenty-five years. It's pretty good. American-made. And we have.
Where are they made, John?
Hmm?
Where are they made, John?
I don't, I think Pennsylvania.
I thought they were going from local.
No, no, we rep, we don't.
Anything else?
I'm sorry.
The Planning Committee for the Wilberham and Hampton Regional Sculptures, they're going to be meeting again, will resume meeting tomorrow.
Your agenda's posted, I appreciate that.
Your agenda's posted. Uh, the, and the, and the Master Plan Committee, the consultant will have a table at the Oktoberfest, at the, at the Fall Fest. Uh, and they'll have bulletin, bulletin boards, pamphlets to hand out, questionnaires for people to ask questions. They've also analyzed the town meeting warrants over the last ten years, to see what kind of trends the towns are in terms of spending and taxes and things like that. They're pairing, they're preparing an analysis and recommendation of the town-owned real estate, they're getting all, all the town-owned real estate together, taking a look at that for their land chapter, use chapter. And they've been informed that the Town Hall may move to Thornton Burgess, so they're including that and looking at other public facilities. And they're working, and what's gonna happen is the next, they're planning, there'd be another public forum, and then, uh, right, then on the twenty-third, I think they're gonna present chapters to the Master Plan Committee, which we'll look at and then we'll give to the different departments to look at and see if there's anything.
When's the next forum?
They have a schedule. They thought it might be the middle of October, but now they said maybe the first of November now.
The last one they had, when they budgeted some of the businesses, a lot of people said that was a little early in the day for people to try to make.
I know, it's tough, they, this, this'll be an evening one for the, for the whole, I, I, but, you know, the, the problem is it's, for the business people, it's really tough to.
Right.
They're working at it, so everybody's working at it, so. Anything else? Administration's report?
I'm sorry, you mentioned having a table, so you mentioned the Fall Fest.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Why, like, do that?
Yeah.
Now, Brian did volunteer, he was available for the Fall Festival.
I'm planning on going, yeah.
Maybe we can have some clicker things or something, we'll show to.
That's why I have prior commitments in the Fall Fest.
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier, are you in costume?
Uh, yeah, we're doing the trunk or treat and send.
Hand out, hand out click? Hand out clickers.
Did you do it for Fall Fest last year for more than sixty-nine?
Bring this to town meeting.
Well, that was the same thing, that was a double, yeah, and then we did, we did it the year before, too.
Um, this week, I mentioned meetings on Thursday, T W B, the Planning Special Analysis Kickoff Meeting. Uh, Thursday at noon is the meeting with Meridia to talk more about the electronic voting. And then Craig and I have a call at eleven on Wednesday, with Charter, to hear about their network enhancements. I mentioned before, in terms of the fire station expansion, uh, Town Council's working on the contract with Saccatio Associates. Yeah. We had our first website, website design meeting, and we have a, a color scheme and layout proposal that we need to get back to them on. Um, and just, um, next meetings are, we need to deal with the, uh, the IMA for the, the regional health group that we're in, we have that IMA that we need to consider. And also, we have the twenty thousand dollar benefit life insurance proposal that we need to talk about, uh, the next time as well, soon.
Anything else to come before the board?
Warren?
Nothing, almost none, thank you.
All in favor?